We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the Budget and Finance Subcommittee roll call.
President.
Andrew Foley. President, Lindsay Moskowicz unavailable tonight. A second order of, third order of business is reports. I'll hand it over to the Superintendent.
Excellent, thank you very much. So, this is actually night two of three. We spent some good quality time last week on the seventh going over the larger picture of the budget. At that meeting, we reviewed the district's budget goals. We discussed the process by which we determined our budget request for this year. We reviewed level services, the level services budget, which when we think about a potential 5% increase to the budget, our level services budget actually encompasses 92.8% of that potential increase. So, we discussed a lot about what went into the level services budget. And then, the remaining, you know, 7%, leaves us with about $173,000 of a delta that we've talked about in terms of priorities that we've set to, for what we're going to use that $173,000 potentially for. Just a couple of words about the level services budget. So, this evening, we're rolling into more specifics at the school levels, especially around the elementary schools, as well as special student services. But one thing I wanted to mention about the level services budget is due to enrollment fluctuations, within that level services budget, we already have, in their four elementary positions, we have enrollment bubbles, shall you say, or different issues within our elementary schools that require four additional staff at the elementary level. So, we're looking at a grade two teacher at the Lowell, potentially a grade five, and maybe even a kindergarten at the Kind of, and a grade three teacher at the Hosmer. So, that's already built into the level services budget. We talked about an increase of .3 to a humanities position at the middle school. We talked about a .5 increase for ESL at the elementary level, and also a .3 increase for world languages at the middle school level. So, those were positions that we knew that we were going to need based upon enrollment that were already in the level services budget. So, when we talk about our specific schools this evening, I just want to make sure that that was something that we've already discussed in case we want to revisit that, but that is already in the budget. From there, we talked about district-level administration budget requests and accomplishments, and then we moved into information technology. And then, we wrapped up the evening, well, we didn't wrap up the evening with Lori Cable. We talked about the Department of Public Buildings. And then, we kind of had an interesting overlap meeting with the strategy team and the Budget and Finance Subcommittee where we went over district-level curriculum, K through 12. So, Dr. McGinnis had given us some information about budget priorities moving forward in the areas of curriculum K to 12. So, that's a recap of our meeting that we had. There were a few questions. I'm not sure if you wanted to, we had some additional information just around Minuteman. Was it?
Yeah, the committee had had a question about what the per-student-based tuition at Minuteman is for this year, and it's $17,266. And we originally budgeted for 65 students, and we are paying for 55 students. What's all the registrations going in that?
For FY '19.
Yep. Yes, so that was a question the other.
I'm sorry, you said 55 students in FY '19?
Fifty-five, yes. That's what we have for '19. And the registrations have not ended yet for next year, so we are still budgeting for 65 at this time, unless the registrations are complete and reviewed and whatever is approved, then we'll have a solid number for next year. But right now, we have 65 in for FY '20.
And that's at $32,000. The FY '20 amount.
I brought that with me.
Oh, that's okay. I think we talked about it at the last meeting.
It's a 3%.
Yeah. If a student has, if a student, it's regular tuition as well as the capital fee, and then, for the about 50% of the students that go would be the special education fee as well, brings you up to about $32,000. If you don't have that special education fee, it's around, it'll be around 26. So, but we do know that in Watertown, it's about 50% of our students that go to Minuteman actually have individual educational plans, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I also sent to the committee earlier, there was a question the other night about the partial FTE increases that Superintendent just mentioned in the level services budget. The dollar figures were correct. It was a type O on the FTE, so that's been corrected on the slide, but the dollar figures were correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, at this point, I think we're going to move into part two, which would be a review of the student services budget. So, we invite Kathy Damaris to provide us with some information around student services.
Yes.
Kathy Damaris, Director of Student Services here in Watertown. Thanks for having me here. And we'll begin by just discussing some of the accomplishments and the things that we've been able to provide for our students and the staff that support them during this school year. So, one of our greatest accomplishments was we provided registered behavior technician training. That is a course that is over 40 hours. We offer that to over 50 instructional assistants who are working with our students who require behavioral supports due to their disabilities. So, many students who are on the autism spectrum, for example, or students who have emotional disabilities that really require some well-trained staff in terms of how to manage behaviors. So, that was, that was very exciting. We provided ongoing legal training for staff administration. Some of the topics we were able to cover or review this year were Section 504, civil rights, bullying and harassment, and disciplinary procedures. We provided professional development to improve inclusive practices, and this was mentioned by Dr. McGinnis as well, for all of our staff. So, we have Lisa Decker, who's nationally recognized, who presented on strategies for co-teaching to the entire district. And then, Kathy Picaro did some focused PD on differentiated instruction with our secondary teachers at the beginning of the school year. And then, at the early steps preschool, we provided professional development on social, emotional, regulating behavior, and the importance of play. So, accomplishments continued. We were able to contract through Walker Consultants to provide role-specific monthly supervision for each of three groups, the school psychologists, the guidance counselors, and social workers, the school adjustment counselors. We are, this is currently happening, we're in the middle of a review of programming, all the way pre-K through grade 12, for students with autism and related developmental disabilities that we tend to call our connections program here in Watertown. And we're contracting through broad reach consulting, Marcy Candler, who's very well-qualified to do that work, having a PhD, as well as a board-certified behavior analyst. We also provided consultation from Gina Duberka of the 321 Foundation, specific for the learning support program at the Kind of Elementary School. So, consultation to our staff in terms of program improvement. We were able to train four special education teachers in the Wilson Language System, and Wilson Language is a structured reading program for students, very effective for students who are identified with language-based learning disabilities, dyslexia, and the like. We provided new classroom libraries for all of our special education programs to support literacy. And we were able to allow any speech-language pathologist in the district that wanted to go to the Ashford National Conference in Boston. That conference takes place all over the nation, and happened to be close by, so we were able to provide that for any of our speech-language pathologists that wanted to go. And then, we enhanced evaluation administration and scoring by purchasing the Pearson Digital Library, so that more of our evaluators are able to use iPads as opposed to paper pencil and easels when they're evaluating students, so that it makes the administration more time-efficient as well as the scoring.
Can I ask a question? Two questions. One is, do all the elementary schools, for the four special education trained teachers in Wilson, is that all schools? Who has access to those teachers?
So, we do have folks that are trained at each of our schools.
Okay.
Yes.
The high school as well?
High school as well, yes.
Because there's only four, but there's five schools, so I just want to.
Correct, so some people already had their.
Oh, I see, an additional four.
Correct, yes.
So, every school has access.
Correct.
Wonderful. My second question is, do you know when the review will be done for the autism program?
So, our goal is to have a report for June.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
No.
So, our goals, I think we talked a lot about this on the first evening, really kind of staying the course, continuing the good work that we've started. We do want to make sure that we can continue to provide access to the registered behavior technician course. Again, we trained instructional assistants. We had teachers that were also interested. So, anyone that was coming in new as an instructional assistant, or any staff, you know, teachers that were interested, we want to be able to provide that for them. Continuation of providing high-quality professional development and job meta-coaching, improving inclusive practices is going to be ongoing. And continuing to improve family outreach. We have worked with the CPAC, and some of our sessions have been better attended than others, so we're just continuing to improve that. And then, continuing to improve special education programming, to really be looking at positive outcomes for our students with disabilities. Again, that'll be ongoing work.
I have a question. Is there anything more specific? They're just kind of broad topics, so like for family outreach in particular, is there anything in particular that you've seen as a need that you're focusing on for next year?
Not in terms of, I think, budget-wise, and I don't think there's anything, any needs there. I think, you know, we have a new CPAC, so we have now a new email address. We've been able to connect, and I think that we're trying to get the Facebook page updated. We have updated the website and things of that nature. I don't think anything in particular budget-wise.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, this slide, I just wanted to, it was one I included last year, and I just wanted to keep an eye on this. This just shows, basically compared to the state where Watertown is at with staffing in terms of special education teachers, and special education parent professionals are, as we call them here, instructional assistants. So, you can see the lower line there, the, and the round, is the state, the state average. So, the state averages around five, kind of consistent across time, special education teachers per 100 students with disabilities. And Watertown has consistently been above that benchmark. And actually, 2018, we're at a high there for, at nine teachers per 100 students with disabilities. And if you look over to the right, you know, we've had some adjustments in terms of instructional assistants, but you can still see that we're still well above the state average in terms of our staffing levels in regards to paraprofessionals as well.
I have a question. So, why is that? Is that, is that something that's necessary and good for kids? Is it just because that's been a tradition?
So, some, a little bit of both. I think the instructional assistance, we probably will see a little bit of a correction next year. There were a couple of instructional assistants that were coded under special education that we figured out weren't actually functioning as special education IIs. For example, an example is the middle school fab lab assistant. So, that next year, I think that that might be a little bit lower. I do think in general, when we think about Watertown, we have, we value smaller class sizes, and I think that that plays out in special education as well, so that our average, you know, teacher-to-student ratio in special education, I think, is comparatively lower, just as our class sizes are comparatively lower to other districts. I think that we continue to really look at the paraprofessional phenomenon in particular, and really, you know, we're asking our IEP teams to be using data to support whether, you know, there's a need particularly if we're talking about a one-to-one assistant, because we've talked, you know, I think for several years about the potential detrimental effects when we have that level of support assigned. So, yes, it's going to sometimes be needed, but we want to make sure that we have really careful data about when that is needed, why that is needed, and really across the day, you know, what does that look like for that student? And how can we fade support so that we're really looking towards independence, which is our ultimate goal for all students.
But, you know, the, is the paraprofessional number, is, that's not only one-to-ones, is it?
That is correct. It is not only one-to-ones. That's paraprofessionals across the board supporting students with disabilities.
But, but they have to be supporting students with disability if they're.
They should be, yes, if they're counted in that number.
Which is at your point, you're saying that you had to real.
Correct, there were certainly some in 2017, and possibly some in that 2018 number, just a few. I think district-wide, there might be six instructional assistants who aren't supporting special education students where all of the rest are.
I guess, you know, each year, we talk about this a little bit, but, I mean, when Watertown, we're high on both sides. I mean, you know, the paraprofessionals as well as the teachers in terms of relative to the state. And I just, you know, we've had in this district, have a longstanding, expensive special education program, and that's still true. I mean, and with the paraprofessionals that we had, going back five or so years, it was actually below, and then it's kind of moved up rather quickly to basically almost to double what the state average is. And so, I mean, that's a process of doing the IEPs and just determining whether or not you need an instructional assistant.
Correct.
Right, but in 14, I mean, how did we move up so fast? In 14, we were under the state average.
So, some of this, we do, we are curious about the data, so I think it's important how those things are coded in, and so when we're doing our reporting, we're definitely going through those lines much more carefully. So, when you look, this is from the radar tool from the state. So, if you call up some other districts, like you might see some flat lines, and obviously that was because data wasn't put, input correctly. So, I'm curious about that in terms of that 2014 number. I haven't gone back into kind of, you know, the data to see exactly what that, you know, should have been in 2014, whether that was accurate. But I do know that when I joined Watertown in 2016, we had, I think it was 140 instructional assistants in our district supporting students with special needs. That was, it was a very high number at that point.
Okay. I mean, and I, I like love and hate this, the state comparison, because it only tells you so much. I mean, I like having it there, but do, how do we compare to other districts that have similar special education needs? So, there are, we are, you know, we're at 21-point-something percent. Are there other districts that are around that, those same percentages, and are we still way above, or is it more comparable? I don't know if you have that.
So, I don't have it by percent of students with disabilities, but I can get comparables that are local, like nearby, like.
Like our dark districts.
Yeah. To look at Waltham, and then also to look at, we can look at demographically comparable districts, and I can certainly get that for you, like, very.
Okay.
And I just pulled it up because I, because it's the radar.
That, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, you can't see this, I'm sorry, I apologize, but we're not above. Like, we're pretty much kind of right at the midpoint, if you're looking. There's a few districts that are higher, and certainly some districts that are lower, but I don't think we're exceedingly above what would be considered average.
This is on what?
Radar.
No, no, on what?
Oh, students with disabilities in the, in the school system, so.
So, the number of students.
By percentage.
By percentage, right.
Right. Yeah, no, I think we're, we're in the, kind of in the ballpark on that.
Yeah.
I think it's the cost side that is higher.
Yeah.
And that's what's being reflected here.
Yeah.
And that's what this tool really is looking at, like, how are we allocating our resources within special education? It has a lot more to it than just these slides, which I'd be happy to kind of walk through.
And, sorry, if I could just, just looking again, I mean, if, to that question, you know, special education paraprofessionals, we are of those districts that I had identified the other night as kind of comparable districts. We are definitely by far the highest, and significantly.
For paras.
For paras. And then, for special education teachers, you know, we're in the top three of the 10. But certainly, you know, I, I think we've also talked a lot about the reallocation of special education teachers, which now, I mean, we have some pretty well-established co-teaching partnerships, you know, across the district, but certainly at the elementary level, they're flourishing, so I think that's an investment that, you know, should pay off seriously for students.
Well, because what I just, I'm looking at the paraline, between 15 and 18, the number doubled, but when you look at outcomes for kids with special needs, it didn't change.
Correct.
So, that's what I worry about, is, is that increase having the impact that we want for kids with disabilities? I mean, really, it was from 17 to 18 that we saw the biggest shrinkage of the achievement gap for kids with disabilities. So, I just worry, or wonder that maybe that's not the direction we want to keep going.
I think that's kind of the slow work that we're working on through the team process, but also some rule clarification to make sure that everyone does understand that the instruction, that the paraprofessionals should not be providing the direct instruction. That should be coming from the general education teachers or the certified special education teacher. I think that's sometimes what we see happening, particularly when there are many paraprofessionals that are available, is that you might see that that student with a disability is getting most of their instruction kind of separate and from a paraprofessional as opposed to a licensed teacher.
Okay.
So, we've been working on it, but it is, it is slow work.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So, with that, we're not asking for any additional teaching staff or instructional assistants. We did have a need that came out through the budget process. Both requested at the middle school and at the Lowell Elementary School was additional social worker, FTE. And so, we thought that that need could be met by having one position and splitting that person between the two schools. And I think, you know, looking at process equity, when we think about our integrated support programs, so that's our in-district programs that support students with emotional disabilities. We opened new at the Lowell in the prior fiscal year, so FY '18, we opened one classroom. We opened a second classroom this school year, and Lowell has found, just with their current staffing, they've been a little bit stretched in terms of providing the emotional support that's needed with that level of need. And then, at the middle school as well, they just have one social worker for the building, which is not quite equitable to where the high school is at in terms of just numbers of folks, and so that was the one recommendation that was made.
We actually have very high, a lot of, a lot of social works at the high school.
We do. We had, so we have, it's 4.3 guidance counselors, I believe. We then have a social worker, and we have a school adjustment counselor, 1.6.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's way above the state average.
Yep.
So, we're above the high school, and we're below at the middle school, is what you're saying?
So, we're not, I'm sort of below at the, at the middle school, but just in terms of equity, like, that person is very much stretched in terms of crisis management, because she has to do that for, you know, students without disabilities as well. And then, we have this program, but right now, it's a pretty high census. We have about 14 students at the middle school level with emotional disabilities, and those folks can have kind of some crisis of their own, just on a daily basis that need management. So, it's just been, it's been a lot for that one person.
And I think you might have already said this, just a recap. The ISP program at the elementary is new. We're in our second year now.
Correct.
And without a social worker. So, I think it was, wouldn't this be a good opportunity to get that support at the ISP program at the Lowell? And then, the added benefit would be to be able to get more FTE at the middle school, so.
And then, two of the biggest budget drivers, as we know, in special education are out-of-district tuition. So, this year, we've currently, as of today, had 56 students that are served in out-of-district placements. For this school year, we're projecting that we have gone north of the $5 million mark for projected tuition. The average, when you do the math on that, is $90,310 per student. We do offset some of those costs with federal grant money, so we set aside, and we've just been consistent with this number, $420,000 we offset in federal grants. And then, state circuit breaker estimated offset comes out to be $2,986. And then, the state foundation reserve offset, it's a very particular grant that historically has applied to Watertown and Holyoke. And it has to do with having a, within your geographic boundaries, a private 766 school that kind of throws off your costs of special education. And for this fiscal year, we were, it was $250,000. I think Heidi already had mentioned that we're anticipating that's going to be $125,000 for FY '20, and hopefully, that's going to continue beyond FY '20. Let's see what that does.
We talked a bit about this last time we met, but of the 5 million, I think 1.2 was Perkins.
That is correct.
Does the 56 students include the students at Minuteman on IEP?
It does not include the Minuteman students. No.
No, because those are not considered out-of-district placement.
Correct. Not, not, not for this.
Okay.
We did budget separately from here, but we did budget 30 students anticipated that were going to Minuteman, based on the historical numbers.
All right.
And then, special education transportation. So, we transport students both that are attending school in Watertown if they need transportation because of their disability, and also those students that are placed out of, out of district we need to transport unless their parents, for some reason, are transporting them. So, the total number of riders is 98, and we put those two together, our anticipated total cost per FY '19, $1,099.15. Oh, and 40 cents, I put the change on there. And we offset that with some IDA money of $110,000.
And there is no, there's no state bucket for this, is there?
For transportation?
No, I didn't know if there was something, okay. Okay.
In, in district riders, are people going between the schools?
There are people who, because, say.
We pick them up at their home?
Correct, yeah. So, a good example, or a simple example, if somebody uses a wheelchair for mobility, they're probably not going to be able to get to school the same way that their non-disabled peers would.
Right.
So, we would need to send a van that had the capacity to bring them back and forth.
So, that would be built into the IEP?
Yes, it has to be listed on the IEP. And the IEP teams have to discuss that at each annual review.
Okay. Are there any questions from the audience? Nope. Okay.
Good, yeah. All right. Fabulous.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So, we're now going to shift into the school-specific presentations. Tonight's focus is on the elementary schools. So, we have two of our three elementary principals. Unfortunately, our Lowell Elementary School principal was not able to attend this evening due to a family, a family.
Emergency.
Emergency, thank you. So, before we get started, though, I would like to just mention that we also have all of our coordinators here. So, if we go through the presentation and people have specific questions around, you know, any one of the areas, whether it's ESL, or FLEX, or technology, or whatever it might be, we do have the coordinators here as well. But I think we'll go ahead and start with the Hosmer Elementary School, since it's the first one in the package. Principal LaRoche, if you could give us an overview of accomplishments and goals related to the budget.
Thanks. So, they listed accomplishments as being collaboration and cooperation, because there are systems and there are programs that will work in schools, and the best way for them to work is for buy-in for everybody. And the district and school, the Hosmer School, spent a lot of time and effort this year to really include everybody in the stakeholders' role, and that's with a lot of training, a lot of things happened last summer with training for teachers, and preparing them for the school year, and then during the school year, we had coaches and tutors that helped the teachers in the classroom and in the schools. So, we saw a slight improvement in our MCAT scores that we're happy about, and we think that that's a result of everything that's going on in the school system. One of the things that we were lacking in the past was a good curriculum, and that has been addressed very heavily this past year, and with more to come. And expectations for students with their behaviors. We owe a lot of the success there to responsive classroom. We've had teachers that had the four-day training, some with a one-day training, and we have ongoing training that Dr. McGinnis has instituted responsive classroom teams. So, the teams meet monthly. We were late getting started at the Hosmer School, so we're meeting twice a month, starting in January. And then, a very nice professional development where the teachers were able to work with one another and have stations, and all designed to improve the behaviors, the expectations, and in turn, we thought it helped the classroom success. We've got literacy and math coaches that sometimes work, sometimes don't work, and the Hosmer School, it has definitely worked. The curriculum coordinators did a great job with hiring the coaches. They're very effective, very knowledgeable. They're in the classrooms, they're modeling lessons, they're working with teachers to find lots of things that will augment the curriculum. I think we're finding that math and focus needs a lot of gaps filled, and they're doing a great job. Teachers don't often have the time to do all that, so the coaches are really helping out there, as well as the coordinators. We have Title I tutors, which is newer for us, and they've been very effective, working with the students especially, coming in part-time, pulling students out, pushing into the classrooms. And we've seen, I've heard from the teachers that those students are benefiting as a result of something that's going to come at the very end, while I'll jump down there. Teachers are using iReady assessment and the data to inform the instruction, and the teachers have really, really enjoyed looking at the data that they're getting from iReady. iReady is simple to assess, it's simple to look at the base data, but there are depths of data that they. of data that they need. Someone who's really skilled at that, and the curriculum coordinators and coaches have been very helpful with that, helping the teachers get into that. So we do that each month for grade level meetings. We look at the iReady data immediately after it happens, and then we refer back to it going forward. It gives you specific things in reading, where you're not just struggling in reading, but you're struggling in particular areas of reading, and the teacher's able to focus that to groups, to stations. And as Captain Dumar said earlier, we've got great small class sizes, and the teachers are able to really do a, a good one-to-one in small group and starting from students. The Teacher Learning Alliance has come in. We have a fantastic presenter who worked with a group of teachers and is training them, has modeled for them. The teachers are getting coverage while they go into a classroom and observe a good lesson. They meet afterwards, pick apart the lesson, here's what went right, here's what went wrong. One of the, the things that really shows the talent of the teacher is how you adjust while you're teaching, and that's something that TLA has really helped the teachers with, and the teachers have expressed a lot of appreciation for that. You can create a lesson, teach a lesson, but depending on how it's going, how you adjust it is really the, the talented part. We have a talented person there. And we're really happy that Spanish language moved forward to grade into second this year, and it will go along into third grade. And the teachers are doing a benchmark testing for the students to see if they're making the progress that they hoped for. And the progress, I think Adam Silverberg can speak to this better, but the, the progress is really great for the students that are doing that. We just experienced International Week last week, where the students did morning announcements in different languages, and we had twenty students by the end of the week that had presented the morning announcement. So small things like that make a school a community, and it brings it closer, and it gives the students an opportunity to show what they know and what they don't. A group of parents and teachers also formed the new family welcoming group, which has really done a great job, pulling families into the school, making it a, a more approachable place for some people that wouldn't normally come in. One of the ideas we had was to have a welcome sign in as many languages as possible. So we contacted our photographer, O'Connor Studios, this is a plug, asked them if they could make these banners for us, and they did it for free. So we made us three banners that were having put up at the entrances. So again, something else, when a parent comes in and sees their language represented, that's really great. Our students came down this morning to take the photos that presented last week, and one of the students looked at it and said, this is Arabic, did you write this? Of course I did. It's nice when you think so. So those are just some of the accomplishments that we've been hoping to have.
What, you talked about this literacy and math coaching and how it was working really well. What do you think is, has it been like the, the people, the particular staffers there, or the model? Because I know we're rolling it up to middle school, and then we obviously want to replicate the success of it. So what do you think has been the reason behind its success?
Yeah, I, I think you can, you've got systems and you've got models that work really well, but it really is the people. The, the people have to be knowledgeable, and teachers are very critical, have a critical eye, and if you don't know your stuff, they're not going to listen to you. And the teachers who are coming in, Erin Moulton, Emily Shaw, and Christine Hill, they've won the teachers over. The teachers trust them, they like them, it's not an evaluatory thing, it's not like an assistant principal coming in to help you. So they, they really have to get buy-in. The culture has to be such that it will work. Lots of models will work, but this is definitely people.
Great. And also just a shout-out to Judy Tan, who started the welcome, the new family welcoming group. She's a kindergarten teacher and really amazing, and she really kicked the whole thing off, so.
So moving into our budget for next year, well, currently, a lot of the things went into curriculum and instruction. That's where the money went, because that's what we needed. So moving forward, we want to maintain the, the high standards that I think were set this year, and also keep it with the district, the district goals. So what, the money that we're requesting goes into is, we have to still get some more materials that we need. We're replacing and upgrading libraries. We're putting a, a big focus this year, if you're not seeing the budget, in technology. We have to replace some cars that are just too old and can't, can't go forward, so we're going to be putting those out to rest, but Tony Carlson's here to talk about that. We need to replace those. We also had a, a philosophy of the younger children, K1, using smart boards and large screens, and one, one idea was to change that and put some, some technology in the hands of the students. Because with iReady, with all of the, the things that we're going to have to have the children learn, we thought that would be a better idea, Dr. McGinnis again, move that forward. And so we'll be spending some money, hopefully if it's approved, to purchase some technology for the other students, iPads and things like that. The communication with families, the third one down, we, Melissa Reer is an ESL teacher who has taken on the, the website, and she's doing a great job. We have Facebook, Twitter, things that I don't typically find myself doing, and she keeps a very current communication going. We think that we would want to expand on that as much as possible and get what we're doing out to the, the groups of people that don't normally see it. For example, she went on a field trip to the Discovery Museum and acted. I never get to go on field trips, so getting to see the pictures of the children and what they were doing was nice for me, and I work in schools, so I'm sure the parents feel even more so. We haven't quite finished on with the new family welcoming committee. There's more that we want to expand upon, like the survival guide. We've taken some tips from the middle school and the CUNEF on what they do, and we want to make sure that we have it accessible to everybody, so that would be some translation going on there as well.
Another question.
Well, I was, what I was going to add is, actually, Kate Phillipson is here, so one of the questions that we had, you had, at the last meeting was about the increase in the ESL teacher at the Hosmer, which is again, level services. And the reason it's level services is because we've become a high incidence district, and then there was the question of, well, how did we become a high incidence district? So if Kate, if you could just come up and just give us a, a brief little explanation about that, that would be great. If you haven't, you've met Kate. Have you met Kate?
I don't think so.
Kate is our, our ESL coordinator, started in September, September, right?
Yes. I recognize the name.
Yep.
If you look in this packet, which I believe you-
Oh, this?
On page four, you'll see exactly the reason why. Because we're higher than the, right, says English language learners is twelve point five percent of the district, and the state is only a ten point five. We're higher than the state average.
Oh, and that makes us a high incidence.
Yeah, we started out at the mid, but then when they recalculated our numbers, they put us into high, and I was like, why are we in high? I thought we were mid.
Yeah. And, and are, so which schools are and which are not?
All of us.
Do we have all, every school is a high incidence district?
Yes.
Or, no, high incident school?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say the highest one is the Hosmer.
Okay.
It, it has more L's, English learners, than any of the other schools.
Okay.
In fact, it has more L's almost than two combined.
By percentage or total numbers?
Total number.
Interesting.
Which would then impact the percentage.
Right. Okay.
This was the twelve point five, which is, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Versus the ten point five. So that, that fraction, that difference is what puts you into the other category?
Yeah. Because before, I think we were right about, at the state average, and now we're about it.
It's interesting, because the, the English, well, I guess that has gone up. The first language, not English, used to be about thirty-three, and now it's thirty-six, so maybe that, that isn't.
That is, actually, I didn't notice that change before.
Right. And, and that's to say that we have a number of students whose families speak other languages, and they speak other languages, but they're not in the English learning program.
Right. Right, but that has changed too. And is, are there any specific languages or regions of the world that, you know, kids are, are seeing an influx, or is it kind of every languages?
I would say we're extremely diverse. Our main languages are Spanish, Portuguese, Urdu-Pashto. We do have some, we have Armenian, but I feel like that population is going down, and we're getting more Arabic and Turkish.
Okay. Interesting. Great. Thank you.
We have a Bulgarian. Icelandic. I have to find an Icelandic dictionary.
Thank you. So just for, for data sake, the Hosmer is at eighteen point five percent English language learners, and the CUNEF is at twelve point seven percent, and the Lowell is at seventeen point eight percent.
Seventeen point eight for the Lowell, and what is it, CUNEF's twelve?
Yep, twelve point seven. And I can put that together in a slide for-
That's just good to know.
Yep.
I know Lowell, a year or two ago, had a big influx of kids who spoke different languages.
Yeah.
Great. Do you have any questions?
No.
I had a question about the, the first bullet. Is there anything in particular, I mean, I know we did a lot of math PD, a ton of work in lit, early literacy over the last year. Is there anything in particular in terms of the curriculum work that you're seeing as a need for next year?
I think it needs to continue. I, I really think that's a great investment, but it's, again, not finished.
Yeah.
I know there are plans for summer, for next year, for the rest of the spring. It, it needs to continue, ongoing. Really good PD has been so much appreciated by the staff as soon as.
Okay. Hearing that very consistently. And then in terms of the, for the second bullet, the iPads and, the iPads, that's for the, for what grades, and what are you seeing as, as like the purpose or the, the need that's driving that one?
Can I call Tony here?
Yes, please. Tony, come on up.
Lifeline?
Yes.
But we're primarily kindergarten for right now. We want to try to get their hands on some things that they don't normally do. We were talking this morning, excuse me, at a grade level meeting where a child was working on iReady for January. That was their first test, they didn't take the fall test in kindergarten, and they didn't know, they weren't able to work the mouse. Not that the mouse is going to be helpful, the iPad. Those type of things, we don't want them to, their grade scores to be affected, but if they're going to work the technology, it's really important to them.
And we're finding that the students in K1 have a much easier time with iPads, they struggle with the keyboard, they struggle with the mouse. Exactly. And we've been testing them on both now, and we see that they perform better, and they just have an easier time with the iPads. So we don't have many, and that's why we're asking for more. It's not only iReady, they're doing math instruction on there, they're doing quite a bit of, quite a few other things. And it's also the iReady instruction they're doing on there.
Okay. I know it's like a center. I know they use it as a center.
And then, when you, so our Chromebooks at the elementary level, level are in grades three, four, and five, so other than a computer lab, it's very difficult for those classrooms to get daily instruction on technology unless they were to go there. So they are keeping, we have iPads in classrooms now, a very, very small amount, and they can have little centers where they're doing the instruction. We don't know that.
And do you imagine that they'll be doing iReady on an iPad in the future? Is that, was that what you're seeing?
No, I think that the Chromebooks make a lot of sense for grades three, four, and five, even two, we're even looking at bringing them down to two. They're doing a lot of writing by then, they need to be able to type and do things like that. Not that speech to text isn't an option, but there's a lot of things that a Chromebook that makes sense.
Okay.
One other thing, just to connect to Kate, is we have Imagine Learning, which is iReady for ESL students, and again, she needs to do it a bunch more eloquently than I, but that's another reason we need more technology.
Also, the undergrads are doing STEM scots, and that's also online, and they just didn't have access to technology, to be honest.
Okay. Great. And you think that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, do you think that, like, this investment this year, is that, you feel like that's going to fill the need right now? Is this a multi-year investment? I mean, oh, you're going to obviously have to-
It may be a multi-year. I think right now, it's certainly going to increase quite a bit of what we have, and we're going to see if it fulfills the need we have, but we'll have to, we'll have to judge next year as to see how well it's addressing those needs.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
And just, just remember, no, no, you, no, no, you, no. I guess there's a combination going on here between level services and re, you know, reallocation of discretionary budgets for technology. But additionally, you remember that we have, on the unfunded priority list, some additional elementary school technology, but we're very optimistic and hopeful that we'll be able to work through that as we continue through the budget process. But we are very confident in the allocations that we have right now to do what we've been talking about, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to even expand a little bit more. So.
I said two more. One is, I love, the website is updated so well. It is, I meant to say, it's really, however you, we organized it, it's just great.
Thank you.
Is it for, yeah, Tony?
So great. Thank you. Yeah, it makes a huge difference this year. And what was my last one? Oh, yes, and I mentioned this before at the last meeting, but if there are little things, and I know we've talked about the, you know, PTO funds at the end of the year, I know PTOS want to have four thousand dollars for something, keep that in mind if there's something really important, technology or otherwise, that you feel like a PTO could help provide that just doesn't make the list. So I know it's little, small dollars, but-
And Kendra, if I can add one anecdote. Imagine Learning, that Principal LaRoche, LaRoche mentioned for our English language learners, a little kindergartner, or first grader, actually, was using it and had the headphones on, and he said to his EL teacher, it's the first time he's heard his language on, and so his, and he wasn't speaking a lot in class, and now he just started to speak a lot more. So it was one of the advantages of, one, having an iPad for the younger kiddos, and two, having this rich programming.
Right. That's great. Yeah. Thanks.
Excellent. So next, we can move on to the CUNEF elementary school, with Principal Charloni here.
Hi. So I'm going to start with accomplishments for the CUNEF in a lot of them are probably repetitive, because in all three schools, one of the big pieces that has been really noteworthy is just the calibration among the three elementary schools, which is an important component as well. But anyhow, the first accomplishment that I'd like to talk about at CUNEF is the addition of, as, you know, we said at Hosmer, also the math and literacy coach to support pacing, planning, and delivery of instruction, which is all aligned, and use of data to form instruction, as well as opportunities for TID instruction and exploration for students. And I think all of this, if you look at that first bullet, all of this is really indicative of good teaching. So it's been just, you know, a, a real rewarding experiences for teachers to participate in this. I know just getting used to the coaches in September, and we started last year with curriculum coordinators, you know, being in the classrooms often, and this year, adding the coaches has just been a wonderful experience for teachers, because not everyone accepts the coaches easily. So this year, it really has been establishing the relationships, you know, unpacking lessons and units of study, and really working towards, you know, the, the components that really need to put essential practices in place so that all of the students, you know, from grades K to five really benefit in the experience that they're receiving on a daily basis. In addition, I know I meet on a week, a bi-weekly basis with, with the coordinators as well, and just, you know, that whole opportunity for everyone to really unpack and look at curriculum in a manner that really is in-depth, and so that we're reaching all of our learners is an important piece of what happens every day in each of our elementary schools. Secondly, another piece of the coaching is working with Teaching and Learning Alliance, and this year, we have included grades one, three, and four at CUNEF. And again, with Rhonda Brenner, just meeting ahead of time, you know, focusing on classrooms that she's going to go into, and what that productive piece of, of coaching will look like. I know an integral piece that we are covering as well is just like the pre-meeting, where she goes in and talks to teachers about what is it that you want, going to be covering during the lesson, and then the coaching piece, where she goes in and observes and assists, and then at the end, debriefing also with the whole grade level team, so that everybody benefits in each of those grades. So I think that is really, has been something that's very rewarding for teachers and for myself as the building principal to see as well. Next bullet I'd like to talk about a little bit is the utilization of a standards-based report card in grades K to five, because again, that was an essential component as well, because, you know, the coordinators have done an amazing job just aligning the curriculum, and the next piece was having a document to match that. So, you know, we rolled out a progress report this year for two terms, and then the standards-based report card, which really was the next important step in terms of matching what teachers were teaching, and then how to report on that in terms of mastery. Also this year, we introduced the iReady diagnostic and the iReady program. Again, another component, which is looking at data, and another data point that teachers had, and then looking at the diagnostic results, and then the programming. and then the programming, what do we do to get kids to move so that they really are, you know, recouping skills that they haven't mastered, getting the reinforcement. And so getting the reinforcement through the program part of the iReady, and also how teachers can teach and form instructional groupings. Because one of the nice pieces of the iReady diagnostic is that it prints out instructional groupings for each grade and each classroom. And even for me as a principal, I can sit down, look at a document, and see, you know, which kids in grade two fall in the first grouping, which is, you know, a little grade level and what skills need to be reinforced, as well as which kids are in group five, which essentially shows they need a little bit more in-depth focus so that they are getting the enrichment they need as well. Next is the Foundations Program, which is the word study component. And so for grades K to two, we use Foundations, and this year we added for grades three, four, and five, Words Their Way. So we kind of covered that piece as well. And so the next important component, I know it was on this committee as well with Dr. McGinnis, and that was looking at, you know, a complementary program to look at the social emotional piece as well, and we chose Responsive Classroom. And that really has brought in a rewarding, you know, connection for students too, so that they see how their social emotional wellness impacts their academic growth as well. And even at Cuniff, we've seen a tremendous amount of just pieces that have put in place in terms of practices, you know, regarding things that we do school-wide now that are better synchronized in terms of, you know, in the cafeteria when we want everybody's attention, you know, how do we get that? How do students respond when somebody's giving them some feedback that is meaningful to them in terms of something that they may or may not have, you know, accomplished, and how do we do that in a positive manner? So looking at teacher language and how teachers, students respond to that as well. So that has been a nice addition. And then for the second year, we've also been working on the expansion of our co-teaching model. And I know during this eighteen, nineteen school year, we've added a special educator and a .5 reading specialist. So we were able to include four more classrooms so that we're having that co-teaching experience so that, you know, teacher, generalist, classroom teacher might be working with a reading specialist and planning a mini lesson that they deliver together for students. Another classroom might have a general education teacher delivering a mini lesson with a special educator. So really collaborating together and making that piece work. And also, you know, looking at ways so that we can include every student in every classroom, getting that core instructional piece, and then breaking up into groups based on, you know, the needs in that classroom. And then finally, we've also spent some time this year, especially for students in grades four and five, just looking at differences. I know we had an incident earlier in the year at Cuniff where there was some graffiti in one of the bathrooms, and we really took that as a learning opportunity and made sure that every month we include an opportunity for students to read about something or, you know, learn something in terms of accepting differences. So we've gone through the tool of teaching students as opposed to, you know, looking at it in a negative way, but just expanding the horizons and opportunities for growth. And so just in summary, I think, you know, all of the bullets that you see up there have really, you know, enabled us at Cuniff to really have, you know, maximize opportunities for teachers to grow as educators and to really methodically look at how they deliver instruction in an effective manner so that we reach all of our learners in our school.
Just to have a couple, just to have background questions. So with the coaches, could you say a little bit more in terms of how much time typically a coach would spend kind of with a teacher one-on-one versus maybe with a grade level group in some capacity there? And then the other question would be, I assume they're working more with teachers rather than directly instructing students, but maybe they model lessons or?
There's a little bit of both of those. I think the first model that a coach participates in is unpacking a unit. And that's one of the most effective pieces that I think we have going, at least at Cuniff. I know, for example, Nicole, who is one of our literacy coaches in our building, she spends a lot of time, you know, asking teachers, where are you with this Lucy Hawkins particular unit? For example, in fourth grade, they started a Lucy Hawkins unit recently on the American Revolution. She spent three hours really breaking that unit down, looking at how you're going to cover each of the lessons.
With all the fourth grade teachers?
With all of the fourth grade teachers. So I basically gave them three hours one day and said, use this time, sit down with Nicole, you know, familiarize yourself with the materials, break down the lessons so that you understand. Because it's one thing reading, the units are very dense, but I think, having been a teacher myself, I know you have to own the lesson and really buy into what you're teaching, or it's not going to make sense if you just sit there and read and deliver it. So like, really building the ownership is important. And I know all of our coaches that's, I know Bob said that they've been very successful this year, and I think thanks to our curriculum coordinators, we really have coaches that are a match, that understand the importance of building relationships and just getting to teachers and really enabling them to make sense of what they're doing, and that's the best way to deliver the instruction effectively. Because once they own it, they feel like they're invested in teaching it, and they don't feel like somebody's going to critique them. So really breaking it down, I think, is the most essential piece. And then the second part is coaching where, for example, Teaching and Learning Alliance, Rhonda Brenner comes in, and she goes in and watches them deliver a lesson, and then jumps in a little bit and supports teacher. And she does a lot of work with the language that teachers use, the questions that they ask students, and really being deliberate about making the most of that opportunity, and, you know, even taking like a strategy group and working with students. What kinds of questions do you ask those students so that they get the most out of what, you know, you're trying to teach them? And then there are like our math coaches who go in and do a demo lesson for a teacher and ask them to participate a little bit as well. So I've seen all three of those, and they're all effective models. And, you know, I really think that as a principal, I'd like to see teachers participating in all of them because that way they understand that it's an integral part of what needs to happen when you're planning and getting ready to execute something, just like any other, you know, topic or something that you need to be prepared for. That's an essential piece of preparation for that. And then they've also done things like held data meetings with, I know Elizabeth Kaplan has come at Cuniff several times already this year with the coaches, and just looking at the data and just, you know, making sure that you're looking at it in a timely manner, and also making decisions about how to use that data and how to manipulate it so that you're working with groups of students who have similar skill needs.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have one different sort of question, which actually I think have been talked about before, and just clarifying. So with iReady, there's a diagnostic component that all the students do, but then there's the program component. And we, as a district, we purchase X amount of program? Is that right?
Middle school.
Elementary, it's universal.
Oh, it's universal?
Yeah.
So the middle school?
They're the ones.
There's a limited amount.
Yeah, there was a limited amount in the beginning of the year. I think it was, I can't tell you, hundred? There were hundred, like?
Middle school.
Yeah, the middle school. But then actually, in the middle of the year, they moved forward and did a sixth grade pilot, so actually they have it universally in the sixth grade.
Since February.
Right, since February. So we're going to see if that's something that proves to be in demand and successful, and maybe consider that moving forward. But it's universal for elementary.
But so if a student does the iReady diagnostic, and they're, do they, do all students then go to the program? Or do they move to, if they don't need to, they are in some other curriculum or?
Yeah, you know what? Why don't I, if you wouldn't mind, Elizabeth?
No.
Our curriculum coordinator works really closely on this.
Okay.
So for iReady, we, students at the elementary level, they take their diagnostic, and at the beginning of the year, when they were finished with the actual diagnostic test, it would put them on to their individualized path of online instruction. We didn't turn it on right away because we wanted to figure it out ourselves, and so now students are using it. iReady recommends forty minutes a week. We are not, you know, we have so much going on that it's hard to carve out the time, but we're really using the coaches and ourselves, the coordinators, to help teachers figure out as a part of a workshop model, morning, in the morning, in the afternoon, times where they can get students on it. But really, we spent a lot of times with teachers, having them figure out how to individually assign lessons. iReady will assign them automatically based on their diagnostic results, and that is great in some situations. But there are some places where teachers, we've been looking at it often all year, where teachers are like, you know, they have gaps here. I want to assign them that. And so we spend a lot of time showing teachers how they can adjust students' learning in that way. There, iReady does so much, and it took us some time with all the teachers to get them to feel comfortable. And so now it's happening in many different ways.
And students are using it at home.
And using it at home.
During the past month, we started that as well.
Yes, yeah. And we can all, all of us principals, coordinators, teachers, monitor usage. And so it's, we, Mina looks at it, we all look at it often to see how students are doing.
Okay, good, thank you.
I just had two small things. One is, I'm so happy to hear the redundancy from the schools. It's just so nice to see the consistency, so I really appreciate that from all the, all the elementary schools. Question about iReady, just generally, I know it's, this is the first year, and I know there's a lot to learn. Data's only as good as how we use it, so I just wonder, you know, hear your thoughts on, is there, are you seeing some consistency? I'm sure there's tons of areas for growth in terms of how teachers and administrators use data to support kids, but I just am interested to hear your thoughts generally about it.
So one real success that I actually am going to share with Elizabeth this Thursday, because we meet every other week. And one real success story that I can tell you about Cuniff is, last week, my second grade team came to me and said that they are now using the instructional groupings that they get from iReady to do a tiered math block twice a week. And they, you know, decided that they were going to do it across the grade levels. So there are six teachers that twice a week now take math instructional groupings based on that iReady data. And it's working really well. I did an observation the other day, and it was incredible how they've broken the students down by area of need. And they're working with groups of students that, you know, five or six students where they can give some individual attention. I saw things from using manipulatives to, you know, try to figure out a problem that had two steps in it, to, you know, students really digging deeply to some enrichment focus that really had a multi-step math challenge to solve. And then there were kids who were still working on, you know, figuring out how to fill in the missing numbers in the hundred chart. So really using that program just as another additional tool to break down students and support some of their needs. Because some of the gaps can be easily focused on so that they make progress and are able to access skills more easily. That are a challenge for them this year, because I think one of the things that we are looking at with iReady too is just, you know, the skill gaps that students have and how to really provide some of that tier two so that once they have those skills in place, they can then, you know, skills that are more complex are more easy, easier to manage and master from that point forward, so.
Can I ask you a bullet question about that? So are they working as a team, like flexible grouping? Because I know at least, is that?
It's a short, it's not a full year. The coach told me about it, so we have like a nice full circle communication. It's a, it's a short bout. Second grade, we are noticing some, if we have any problems with MCAS data at third grade, we can kind of attribute it to some of our second grade issues around adding and subtracting in particular. And math in Focus, we've uncovered some issues with math in Focus and adding and subtracting. So we've been supplementing with additional strategies, mostly from Engage New York. But so second grade across the district has been working really hard at this. So this is a very out-of-the-box creative way to get students really solid with multiple strategies for addition and subtraction. And it's just, it's a, it's a quick bout to really get them, that we were noticing they're having, from the data and from Emily Shaw, our K-2 math coach, has been doing actual math running records with second graders to figure out what they can and can't do. And so this is a really specific, quick bout in response to what we're seeing.
And it's grade level?
For second, yeah.
So like they all get together at the same time?
Uh huh, yes.
Yes, kind of with two classrooms, it's?
They use two classrooms, so like there were three groups in one classroom and then two groups in another classroom, so it worked out really well. Even the ELL teacher participated, and she was doing some language work around some of the concepts and skills that they were exploring in mathematics, so it was great.
And on Wednesday, the whole second grade across the district is going to get together, and one teacher is going to present a problem with practice, and they're going to use a protocol to really, everybody put their heads together around this issue of students' understanding of addition and subtraction in second grade. So they're, led by the coach, they're all going to get together, and someone's going to say, okay, here's my students, here's my data, here's my problem. And it's a problem everyone's sharing, so they're all going to put their heads together and try to come up. And so her team will probably share this, and it's going to be a nice use of their time.
So it's across second grade, across the district?
Uh huh. Yes, we're noticing that. Yeah, yeah, we just want to, it's, our curriculum's lacking presenting them multiple strategies, and we want them to have multiple strategies, not rush the standard algorithm. So we're covering things and responding to them, which is good.
Interesting. I've seen a lot more in Engage New York, just to make it some work.
We're supplementing certain, and the teachers are liking it, and the coaches are supporting them, so that's good.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Mina, you had a few goals up there too.
Sure. So goals that are for the budget for next year are just to maintain class size. As DeeDee said, we're still looking at numbers in terms of what the grade configuration will look like at Cuniff next year. And then just to continue to build on collaborative relationships with the coaches, teachers in order to support all the best practices that, you know, Bob and I have articulated this evening so that we have excellence in all aspects of teaching and learning. And then again, just to implement a K-5 tiered system of support across all of our grades. At Cuniff, I think that's something that is the next step for us at the Cuniff school because I feel that, you know, just as one example of second grade is just the beginning of what needs to happen consistently within our school. So just figuring out how we're going to do that so that students, every student in every classroom gets what he or she needs.
We talked about that at strategy.
We did, didn't we? Yes. Yes, and how you need to start someplace, but not with everything at once. I just want to, just, I mean, Elizabeth alluded to the fact that, isn't it nice to have that communication loop? You know, I see high levels of collaboration amongst the principals, the coaches, the coordinators. Nothing is done in isolation, everything is done as a team. And you said it's nice to see that across the buildings, you're seeing the same things, and that has to do with just the essence of the team and people working together for the students. So they were onto something.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
So I can, I can speak for the Lowell?
Great.
Do you want me to speak for Lowell?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I'm just going to say that pretty much everything that was just said from the Hosmer and the Cuniff is alive and kicking at the Lowell. Two things, I think since we have some people here in the audience, two areas that might be good to have, maybe Adam speak a little bit about, is the expansion of FLESS into the third grade. He's like, great. Well, in absence of Stacy. So I think, you don't need to say much, but basically, you know, we're moving into the third grade, and that has a budgetary impact in terms of, one of the priorities is a .5 FLESS teacher to help us in that transition. I don't, you don't need to tell us much, but where are we headed with FLESS?
Yeah, we're interested in maintaining FLESS one grade at a time for right now, and the Hosmer already has two full-time teachers. Kind of has one full-time teacher, and Lowell has one full-time teacher. With the addition of third grade, the teachers that we have allocated can cover the sessions, except for Lowell would need additional staffing to cover third grade. And yeah, we're hoping for a .5 position to cover all the sections needed and give a little bit cushion here or there as well in future years.
This continues at three times a week?
Yeah, we're still three times a week, every class, including the ISP classrooms. That Lowell is getting Spanish, yeah.
So what is the third, sorry, a last question. Adam's like, great. So now that we're in our fourth year, so that's pretty exciting. So the students that are going into the third grade have now had FLESS for three full years, and they're heading into third grade with, what, what are some of those learning outcomes that a third grader might have with a foreign language? Are they speaking in sentences? Are they answering questions? Are they?
Yep, so they're definitely able to follow along in a class, so they can follow directions that can, if you were, or anybody were to go into a class, it might look like they're speaking in sentences, but they're actually chunking together two types of phrases that they've learned. So like they could, at that point, say something like, I like to play, which is a sentence, but they're not learning it as a sentence at that point. So it would look like they're speaking in sentences on a variety of different things. And we're going to kind of recycle the curriculum so that it's not just new content, new content all the time, but that it's, they've learned, they've got this base and established it, so now we're going to go a little further with what they've already learned.
Is the language, is it, how much is kind of, would you say is kind of conversational? It's primarily conversational, or is there any component in terms of, you know, sentence, you know, verb tenses and grammar and things of that nature?
Yeah, no, we're, we do not explicitly teach grammar.
I drive them away really early.
In terms of teaching grammar though, I would say we're focused on the first person. So can students respond in that I, you, O form? But we're not explicitly teaching grammar. It's kind of just inherent, excuse me, inherent in how the classes are constructed. They'll kind of create their own grammar in the brain, which is actually, the studies would, there are studies that say grammar is not, it's not the way to go, and people, especially that young. And people, especially at that young age, like, yeah, once you're maybe older, you can analyze language a little differently, but it's not, that's not the goal of our, of our classes. Uh, I'd say almost every class has a component where kids are speaking in partners and having a conversation together.
I mean, I, just as a comment, I, I, I certainly would agree. I mean, at that age, you wouldn't think of grammar, it would, you know, kind of turn them off, I suppose, in some way. But, but I, I will say, I may, my sense too is that, um, you, you learn the, the grammar of your own language when you, when you study the grammar of another language? That's certainly the experience I had.
Yeah.
So, at some point, they will get that part more in middle school.
Yeah, a little bit more once they're older and more established in conversational. Yeah, once they get into more of an intermediate range, then in order to advance, they have to speak in multiple tenses. So, there is a little bit more analysis, but probably not for the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's great.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And then the middle school's gonna have to revamp their Spanish.
Not there yet, but yeah.
Couple of years as well.
Well, would you, are, you gonna take, we're gonna take that one year? Like, how long does that take to really think about revamping six, seven, and eight? You gonna do it, kind of roll it up or are you gonna do it at a time?
So, it's interesting that we rolled this elementary program out as we kind of shifted our departmental philosophy. So, we're already teaching less grammar and more communication in the middle school and high school. So, I think we'd have to tweak the content a little bit and I think the teachers will be a little surprised with what they can do already. So, yeah, we, we, I would say next year, we'd probably start thinking of it, maybe get the middle school teachers to come and observe a third grade class and start like that, start slowly there.
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be a pretty drastic change from kids who have been in low language to kids who have been six years of language.
Yeah, six years, yeah.
Yeah, it might be more like after three years of middle school might be the, the equal elementary type thing. So, it's kind of like, they're, they're gonna have to see what our current freshmen can do. That might also be a comparison of like, well, they can do a lot. Or they can picture what their eighth graders can do at the end of three years. Uh, might be similar to that, that they'd be entering in, yeah.
So, you'll start thinking about this next year?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, get ahead of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Lowell entry school?
No. Thank you. Uh, wait a minute, what's extended learning time before and after?
So, actually, I think they're doing that in all the schools. Elizabeth, it's, do you wanna talk about that? Both of you are here, do you wanna talk about, maybe a little about the extended learning time?
Um, MCAS Academy is in all three schools, um, or it's, we have the tutoring.
The one.
Um, it's, yes, before, some schools choose to do it before, some after, um, February to MCAS time. That's about how it goes, thank you.
Um, I, I have a before-school program above the kind of in at the Lowell to work on natural learning, 'cause it was challenging with iReady to try to find time to do it.
We also, um, did math in Olympia at, uh, two of the schools and hopefully we'll have teams at all three schools next year as well.
Can I ask just a question about MCAS tutoring? The name disagrees with me, 'cause we don't teach to the test. I don't wanna tutor to the test, and I don't think that's what's happening. But I do, I worry about how, how we, what we call it.
We will take that under advisement.
Yes, just an aside.
And, and I would imagine that they're really targeting the, the skills that the students are coming in in terms of needing the tutoring. So, I mean, it might be if they're a third grader, they're maybe doing second grade skill building because you can't just expect that the third grade MCAS, you know, content is what they need because they might need something even before that. So, just general, um, strength, strengthening of math skills is probably, the strengthening of math skills, um, tutoring program.
So, this year, I, I told them, that people who are teaching it, we, we told them like, don't test prep, don't talk to them about how to answer multiple choice. We now have this wonderful iReady data and benchmark assessments and all the data grids that we've worked so hard to maintain, use that and use it as, it's almost what DeeDee said, um, skill work.
I mean, it, um, it's great, right, it's great they were providing enrichment. And it was never clear to me, is it enrichment or is it like, um, when you read these directions, like getting people used to the, the, the process itself? It was, I just don't know.
We do, I mean, we do the infrastructure tests and they take the online tests and that's really the.
Okay, yeah, maybe well-served to, I mean, and, and to give parents an enrichment opportunity is great. I think people would jump at that. And maybe people are jumping at it, I just, I just don't like the name, just saying. Great, thanks.
Of course. So, I think that's what we have, um, from the school department for this evening.
Oh, goals, do you wanna do the goals?
Oh, the, well, I wondered if you had any questions around the Lowell goals.
Oh.
They're very much in keeping with the other two goals. I didn't really see, um, sorry, I mean, the, we talked about the ISP social worker, the FLESS expansion in the third grade, um, and then everything else seems to be pretty much aligned with what everybody else has, has spoken about. Um, one thing that, that Stacy put on there, and maybe actually Dr. McGinnis might wanna speak to it, is, um, the idea of purchasing the units of study for writer's workshop, but we're not rolling out writer's workshops next year. Um, the idea is to, to prepare for the rollout of writer's workshop. Um, and we actually talked about that today. We had a calendar committee meeting and that came up as to what, what, so what's on the docket for next year? Um, and, you know, it was pretty clear to say that we wanna have the resource in hand but for people to take the year to figure out if they wanna dabble their toes. But the following year is when we're gonna really look at writer's workshop.
I thought we had writer's workshop in third, fifth, no?
No, we have, um.
We have Lucy Hawkins though.
Empowering writers?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's what she's, sorry. She does reading and writing.
I gotcha.
So, they've implemented a reading, um, workshop model and then there's a writing workshop model.
Yeah, and many teachers actually use the writer's workshop model anyways, but, um, it's, it's a decision as a district, what, what direction we wanna go in. And it's lovely because once you get the reader's workshop set, um, then you know the components of the workshop model. So, readers, writers, math, you know, you can insert different content into the workshop. Um, so, that's the next step.
Okay, and with this, if we did this now, this wouldn't be implemented till 2021?
Right.
And would that give teachers time if you wanted to do PD on it or any sort of? I mean, that seems like a huge benefit.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
What's, what's the distinction of a workshop? What does that mean to you?
So, um, hmm, so.
You could plug different contents into it.
Well, meaning it, it's a structure of a, of a, of a mini or a focus lesson where you kind of do a little whole group instruction and then you break up into smaller group instruction and you focus on particular strategies or skills that kids are working at that's differentiated. Um, so, it, it's, it's just a different approach for the delivery of instruction.
As opposed to a whole class?
Yeah, yes.
More matters?
Yeah, and it's very, either strategy-driven or, um, you know, theme-driven. So, you'll spend, you know, four to six weeks on a particular strategy or theme or type of, of literature. And so, your mini lessons are very tight around making sure that, you know, kids are prepared to, you know, demonstrate their understanding of informational text, for example. Um, and then throughout the course of the rest of the, the workshop, it's all about the small group instruction, working with teams, independent reading, um, you know.
Guided reading?
Guided reading, you know, where you break kids up based on their reading levels. It's, what? Oh, wait, oh, sorry, the most important thing is conferencing, sorry.
Where the teacher moves around.
Yes, and so, if I'm, you know, either independently reading or, or writing, which will be the, you know, a lot of conferencing and writing is you, you really coach kind of an individual kid? Checking how they're doing, yeah, thank you. So.
All right, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay.
I just wanna thank, um, the people who didn't have a chance to speak. So, um, and I'm not gonna ask them to speak, but, you know, early steps.
Preschool's happy.
Preschool's happy, they're really right on, um, you know, fine, fine arts is doing great. I'm liking the, the fine arts, um, last, I went to Urantown yesterday, which was fabulous and fantastic just to see the talent at the high school. And then tomorrow night is bandera, so, you know, very exciting times in the, um, fine arts. And there have been some, in the discretionary budget, some great asks for, um, fine arts to strengthen the program. So, that's exciting. And, um, health, we, in PE, we certainly are working towards incorporating more health in the, um, elementary curriculum. So, um, these coordinators and the principals are working tremendously to, um, really provide a full program for, for our students in Watertown.
And flexibility at the high school.
Yeah, so.
Well, thank you all very, very much. I very much appreciate everything you do. Um, now I'm gonna end the meeting, so.
On time.
Future budget and finance meetings, the next one is, uh, March thirteenth, it's at seven-thirty. We're gonna do different, this recommended budget, secondary school, schools athletics and extracurricular activities. Is there a motion to adjourn? Seconds on favor. All right, we have it, thank you very much.